The time having arrived, we're going to call to order the February 26th, 2024 meeting of the Town and Hanson Planning Board at Meeting Room A on the second floor of the Town Hall building. I'd like to also announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on Women Hanson Community Access with playback times and other related information on this recording being found at the WHCA.tv website. Again, that's WHCA.tv. This evening's attendance with this call to order are four members of the board. Mr. Kemen is not in attendance yet in the Town Planning Office. That's our Town Planner and our Town Administrative Assistant for the Planning Office. First item of business on our call to order is the approval of the February 12th, 2024 public meeting minutes. That would be item one in your packet. What is the will of the Board for the February 12th, 2024 meeting minutes?
So what?
Motion's been made by Mr. Benignato?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm opposed.
Motion carries 401. Those minutes are approved. We have a few minutes. We have a 6:35 public hearing that will be opening, so gentlemen, if you would prep and prepare for that, you have some information in regards to the upcoming public hearing meeting at item two in your packet. Do you want any paperwork for the public hearings? I mean, Tony's going to put it up on the page.
Is there any extra available?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Getting my job done here.
The time having arrived of 6:35, we're going to go into our next agenda item, which is the opening of a public hearing. At 6:35 PM, public hearing to amend the Town of Hanson zoning map and the Town of Hanson Land Use Regulation zoning bylaw in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, and Sections 3A, the Zoning Act. Specifically, MBTA district map. The district map outlines the area designated to allow multifamily housing as a right. The district meets compliance model requirements established by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, formerly the DHCD. The current zoning, Town of Hanson zoning map must be updated to include the new MBTA zoning district. An inclusion with this public hearing, we also have the draft zoning bylaws. The bylaws provide zoning regulation for setbacks, land areas, et cetera. The bylaws conform with sample zoning provided by EOHLC and have been tailored to meet the needs of the Town of Hanson. In addition to that, for the record, we'd like to note that the notice of public hearing was published in the Women Hanson Express on both Thursday, February 8th, 2024, and Thursday, February 15th, 2024. Town Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Che. So the planning board this evening, the zoning amendments were submitted to the Select Board for their consideration. They in turn handed back to the Planning Board to hold the public hearing and prepare a report. The bylaws were submitted to the Town Council for their review. They made some edits. The copies that are on the front of the table there and in your packets are the latest and final edits made by Town Council. The edits they made were more clerical as far as organizing it, and they did add some language, which is highlighted in yellow. Yellow or green. So it's what was submitted to the Select Board minus the edits of the Town Council. It addresses the required setback requirements, the affordability requirements, who's in charge of reviewing the site plans, who's the permit granting, a special permit granting authority. So the, other than those edits, it's relatively the same, but I can go over those edits if you want. Also attached to your packet, you'll see is a zoning map. And the map lists what parcels comprise, say, what parcels make up the district. It's against about just over 78. Correct. And that's the map, and those are the bylaws that would be forwarded to town meeting to put before town meeting voters.
I think you have anything I need to clarification on, because most of the edits, Tony, it looks like just codification stuff. Item I, you know, 1.0, things like that.
Correct.
As far as item, going to item I, the site plan review, they changed the wording, site plan review is required for a project that proposes any mixed use or commercial development?
I think that's supposed to say mixed.
Mixed, yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Who's it calling?
Number of parking spaces of following maximum number of off-street parks. Is that supposed to be where are you at? F, off-street parking. Number of parking spaces of following maximum number of off-street. Shouldn't that be the number of parking spaces that it should be, not maximum?
I'm a little confused on that one. Well, then you get the table.
But that's the maximum. That's not what it should be.
Yeah, I'm confused too.
Yeah.
The following maximum number of off-street parking spaces shall be permitted by use either in surface parking or within garages or other structures.
I just didn't know if that phrase should say the following number of off-street parking spaces should be two spaces per residential dwelling for multifamily, for example.
Well, it had said to meet parking requests, the following maximum number of off-street parking spaces, and then they made those changes to what you see there. Yeah, they, for some reason, they figure maximum. You know, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I can't tell you what exactly their thoughts might have been there, but that's what they figured.
I almost thought that what we usually go off of would be minimum. That would be the minimum.
I mean, if you, if you want to make an edit there, you know, and say that the following number of off-street parking, remove the word maximum.
Yeah, how do you get within a hot mile of a transit station, you can have 1.25?
Yeah, what's 1.25?
What, you got to cut the vehicle in?
Those are, well, those are, the whole idea with some of these is the fact that they're looking to create the use of the public transit, so you can be allowed to reduce some of the parking space numbers. For instance, like, say Dakota Partners, I believe that project, instead of two per unit, I believe it was like, they used like one and a half. And it was because it was like right there to the, to the train station.
Exactly.
So the way it's written, we don't want more than these figures.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lot more than those.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
The following maximum number of off-street parking spaces. Because as you were saying, you would think of minimum.
Exactly, yeah.
The minimum requirement would be, but then you'd, then you'd have that minimum would be defined by the jurisdiction to the transit stations.
Exactly, yeah.
So it would be opposite of what they have.
Hey, I get, I get what you guys were going for on that, but it's just a little confusion.
I can understand that.
We usually go with minimum.
Yeah, no, I can understand that.
And then the other change, as I said, they omitted some of the previous, so they inserted the EOHLC.
Correct.
Which is good, and then they defined EOHLC, okay. So we need to edit missed on item I, I, item one to mixed. I, yeah, item I, so the site plan review is required for a project that proposes any mixed use or commercial development. Same with the mixed. So one more, keep going. Yeah, one more. So that it should be mixed and mixed.
Well, that's good.
It's Tony to figure it out.
I want the mixed or missed?
It should be mixed.
Doesn't make any sense that it would be missed.
Any other questions from the Board? Yes. Mr. Ellis?
Page D. G, I guess G. Restaurant, cafe?
What do you have there? Page D. Oh, page D, I said G, sorry. So item D.
Yeah. Talks about restaurants on the first floor, you know, business on the, on the first floor. That's a great idea. We have that going on down on Main Street right now, I believe. But if it's going to have apartments above it and you have restaurants in it, it should be mandatory, air changes down there in the restaurant so that it doesn't permeate upstairs in the floor, stairs. There's nothing worse than smelling a restaurant there.
I would think that under the Building Department and Building Code, they would probably have to have something.
I don't know if it is. That's all, that's all I'm bringing it up there, you know, because it can be.
So we have, it's a good part, we're going to have another public hearing. This is the last public hearing, so I'm more not reading any part.
Also, on F, the bicycles.
F, item two, number of bicycle parking spaces?
I think it is. This one here.
Oh, three, bicycle storage.
Right. It should have something in there for the electric bikes, not to be able to bring them into the building. And I think it should be a fire code anyway, but I don't know if they have it yet or not, but, you know, we've, they've lost a lot of buildings because of it.
Batteries, yeah.
Don't flare enough. And I think anyway, some sort of protection. Most bikes are out on a rack, but of course you've got the winter weather and everything, and so they start bringing them in, you know, but if they had a...
Talks about covered bicycle parking.
Yeah, covered, covered.
It talks about it.
Okay. It says the structure, covered parking bicycle spaces, parking spaces shall be integrated into the structure of the building.
Yeah, so it goes into the building, and that's all good.
No, the, the covered part of it is integrated to the structure of the building.
Not the structure itself.
Right.
So the only part...
So I always think of it like as an awning off a building for parking.
Just a covered walkway or something.
Exactly, yeah.
Covered parking bicycle spaces shall be integrated into the structure of the building.
I don't know what that actually meant. Doesn't say attached, but...
Yeah, it's not, it's not saying that you're bringing the bikes into the building.
Yeah, right, right.
It's saying, you're cut, you're cut, what's covering the bicycles is it could be attached to the building, like the roof that would be attached to the building.
The problem comes in, there should be a separation because of the fact that if the roof goes up, then that could pass to the building. But the building's sprinkled anyway, but that isn't the point. Now, at least it should be under the fire code.
So we got to bet, we got to bet coding for bicycle storage for that, and then coding for...
If you want for under bicycle storage, you can add electric bicycles to meet all required codes, all required building codes for storage, something along that lines?
Sure.
So we could add something like that?
That sounds good. That's, so. That would be under bicycle storage, would you add a whole item, another item five?
Just put the storage, bike, bike storage.
Could put it under, I think you could put it, I think you could put it under three.
Yeah.
So the long lines of all electric bike storage to meet all necessary code requirements.
It's nice to see that electric bikes have become popular.
Yeah. I see them a lot going down 27, or 58.
Didn't I see you on one, Tony? Didn't I see you on one?
Yeah.
That was the strike.
Yeah, I could say something, yeah. Got to be nice. Let's see, the other one I got is G3-C. G as in George, three. Three, that, 3-C, 3-C.
Aesthetic?
Aesthetics. Aesthetics. The way it reads, I, I don't know if you can have that in there because most of the courts have said it's a freedom of speech as to what you want to do in a building and what color you want to paint it and all that. So I'm not sure, that's all I'm bringing it up.
Well, those are, that was actually from another town. And this goes before the AG's office as well.
Yeah, they passed muster.
So, I mean, if it goes, if it makes it through town meeting, then it still has to go to the Attorney General's office for review. So if there is anything in there that is not allowable, they would comment.
All right, it doesn't matter, I just want to bring it up, that's all. It's hard to do, the way it's, the way it's written is that it has to be like a colonial or a, a gambrel, or something like that in a four-story, three-story building, it's difficult to make it look like a Cape building.
Well, I suppose you could stop at New England architecture. Of course, someone then could ask, what is New England architecture?
Right.
You know, and I think that's why that they added examples so that people would understand what New England architecture was, you know?
Well, the ones we got that Steve is doing down, Steve, I forget how his last name.
Egan?
Deegan, Deegan, no, Egan.
Egan.
That's more of a modern style, I would think. It's the same thing he's got with Whitman. He's doing a lot of other buildings. It seems like a standard type building.
Modern New England.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just bringing it up.
It's pretty cool. I do like, I like under G for the lighting, they have the dark sky to blind, I like that, that's like to have that in there.
Let's see.
They have flood lighting.
H2? They did have H2.
H.
It's not for the blind.
H2 applicability? Affordable requirements and applicability, so applicability under H, affordable requirements.
H2.
That's I2. That's I2, one previous to H2. Put it under one page back.
Yeah. Thank you. Sure? Oh, yeah, I wrote this down when I shouldn't have, because then later on it explains it what you can do and can't do to extend the project if you want to hold the project up. But the reading here is you don't want to, if he's got 10 units, which we probably won't have, but if you have an area where they're going to put up 10 units and he gets four done and the economy kind of changes and stuff, and he can stop and wait for the economy to change, but thereon, later on towards the end, it refers to applicability, I think it was, and affordability. And it refers to that you have to get permission from the Board to be able to phase it, because they don't want to phase the projects.
In the time line section.
I don't think that's anything to get phased. And then the last thing was the electric cars. You got, if you've got underground parking, and it does stay in here somewhere, that you have to have electric chargers at the buildings or somewhere on the property. So do you want electric cars underneath?
Again, that falls in, you have the building code that has to deal with that too, you know?
I know, you should come up with something better, they haven't yet anywhere.
Right.
I don't know, just a thought.
We can't add it at later, at a later date, you know? I mean, we can, especially if they come in with tighter regulations.
Well, my thought is they shouldn't have any underground parking. They should have them parked in the parking lot so that they can charge the vehicles if they have an electric vehicle, and then they don't have to worry about any of it affecting the building itself.
In new constructions in Boston, they're allowing electric car charging stations, commercial electric car charging stations to be put underground parking.
Right, because they don't have any outside parking lots. Whereas here, you're mandatory to have an outside parking lot instead of under, under the building.
And I think you could probably address that in the site plan review.
Yeah, okay. That's it all, all I got. So I don't have pretty good, I mean, there might be other things that people...
Any other comments from the Board?
Just one more question.
That's cool.
The, the timeframe section was highlighted. Was there a reason for that?
Section I, item three, timeline.
Yeah, exactly. Later than 45 days, the 120 days. Was that a change?
Yeah, there was a change. There was, it was 30 days and, it was 30 days.
Item I? Almost the last bit. Item I, section three, timeline.
Yeah, 30 days and six months, and the Town Council just felt that 45 days and 120 days were more in line with the requirements.
Or if you have that kind of shakes in with...
Yeah, gives you a little more time, so.
Yeah, they don't want you prolong it because you don't like it.
We pretty much did, yeah.
Any other questions from the Board? We do have some audience members here this evening. Any questions or comments from the audience members? This is a public hearing. Mr. Hill, welcome Selectman Member Hill.
Thank you very much for inviting the Town People. Ed Hill, 116 Pine Grove Ave. D1B, where it talks about what can go on the first floor and what can go on other floors. This assumes no retail or any other business can go onto the second floor. Is that purposely put in here?
Yeah, D, if you look under D2, it says that uses by special permit, so second-floor office use and mixed, mixed-use developments, that's something that would require a special permit from the Special Permit Granting Authority, that being the Zone Board of Appeals. So, so...
Office use, but the other, the other retail and other things will be only on the first floor?
Correct.
And that's as expected.
Correct, yes.
And one thing I had mentioned before, there's a lot of talk about this around town and around the state, and I think a lot of people don't understand the pros and cons of it. And I think, I hate to have people vote on something without knowing the real pros and cons, not the Facebook pros and cons. And I love this document, and I, from what I'm hearing, this is going to be reviewed, and this is what's going to be used for this area. This, I would love to see something like this that explains what it grants. If this, if somebody was building in another area or town, the same dwelling, how many parking spaces do we require? How many, I mean, you guys know this, you know, the, you know, the two, two per people, two per dwelling or 1.25. But what about the other places on Main Street? What is their requirement? Just, and what are we losing, what are we gaining by, you know, truly gaining by implementing this, other than not being, you know, we're obeying the law? You know, I mean, that type of thing. And I don't know if that's something that would come from a planning board, or where something like that would come from, but I would like to see something that is the truth and explains it so that somebody that knows nothing about this could read a document this size and understand and make an informed decision at town meeting. I don't know how to get to that point.
So the first would be having like an FAQ comparing this MBTA overlay zone with neighboring zones?
Yes.
As far as all aspects or just like the parking and...
I would kind of like to think all aspects, but I don't know. I mean, it's kind of a few, and I don't...
Yeah, the zoning book's pretty thick, so.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying in this, but with two columns, you know what I mean?
Oh, compare protons.
Well, or this is what we have in this today, and this is what we have in this mixed-use development. And, and say, okay, you know, the, you know, within a quarter of a mile, it's one. So I mean, that would be different, because I'm assuming it's two if we're a half mile or further from the, the train stations. I'm assuming that's for every other development.
I think, I mean, one saying what are the requirements, the basic requirements for the 40R, and then what would be a normal basic requirements for 40B as far as parking?
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I don't even want to get 40B necessarily.
Or would it be more, or would it be more like MBTA versus the underlying district that is there?
Yeah, if we did, if we, if somebody built the same building in this zone before we made it that zone, what would be their restrictions? And what is changing in that zone? What, what, what requirements are changing for builders in that zone?
MBTA zoning versus Town of Hanson zoning.
And I don't know that that's for you guys. I'm just, I'm kind of thinking pie in the sky. It would be great to have something that people can have and educate them.
I mean, we can take a look at it, Chair, and try and put something together.
Make a display that we could have at the entrance or...
And then on F2, the second box, I have no idea what that's saying. It starts as, as location, multifamily, and mixed use. It starts as, has location, multifamily, and mixed use. Within one mile of the train station, one per dwelling unit, one per, per five parking spaces. What, what, what does that limit or not limit? What does that, what does that mean? Does that make sense?
Yeah, some of that is what we were talking with the one, the one point two five.
No, we're not talking about that one. I'm talking about this box here.
The upper box?
Oh, oh, that, that is for bicycles. Under F two?
Yeah.
That, that box you're looking at is actually for?
One per five parking spaces.
Yeah, so the number of, so it's because of the formatting. So F two will say the number of bicycle parks with the following minimum numbers of covered bicycle storage space shall be provided
Okay.
By use. And then, and then that goes, yeah, and then that goes to the next, yeah. The formatting gets, you try and format this so it's very clear, but sometimes they, because they're providing you with a document already, the formatting can get.
But like I said, this is, this is, this is invaluable. It has helped me understand a little more, even more than having it punched in a second time helps. Thank you for the, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? No, no questions. The hearing's not going to be included tonight. The hearing's going to be continued. What's our timeframe, Tony?
Uh, if we're going to make the May town meeting, you would close it tonight.
Without all the edits? Which edits? I think we were talking about validating some coding. Uh, we did talk about editing the electric bicycle storage to meet necessary code requirements, which is a coding issue again.
Do that in the spilling.
Oh, yeah, mixed, mixed use. Were we even changing the status?
I didn't know if he was asking. Yeah, discussed.
Yeah, I think it was just more of a. We can make those edits and then have, we could call a special meeting on the fourth. That'd be interesting what the timeline is if we're going to have that back.
To double check, I believe like the twenty-ninth is the drop dead date, then this is going to go to the, so the warrant, the entire warrant is going to the select board, I believe, next month.
This is going back to the challenge too or?
Uh, they, that was all their, their edits. They, yeah, they've, they've made all their edit, their edits.
So you said the twenty-ninth, Tony, February twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
And they need, they need finalization by one day?
Well, the time, the timeline, the timeline is this goes to the select board for their warrant, to review the warrant on, what's the? What's the next?
Next batch? I think it's next week.
I believe they're going to review this the fifth or the twelfth.
Can we get the calendar? So, when do you have your next, so the fifth or the twelfth for our select board?
What is it?
Fifth of the twelfth for your next select board meeting.
So we don't have on the fifth.
Okay, so it'd be the twelfth.
Not that it matters, but I'm doing the fifth.
Yeah, twelfth.
So the twelfth, so, uh, you would be meeting on the eleventh.
We would have to be meeting on the eleventh.
You will, you will be meeting on the eleventh. That's the second.
So I need the requirement for posting?
Well, it's public hearing, so if you keep it open.
Yeah, so we'd have to get the edits back, uh, the skin of our teeth. Meeting on the eleventh. And then getting that to the select board for, so they'd have to have, at least have a placeholder on their agenda on the seventh to hear it.
Right, you could, if they're going to be on the twelfth and you met on the fourth. All these edits could be squared away.
Yep. Who was it, a consulate reviewer?
Uh, Liz Linden for Talon, meet Talon.
And there's not too many things that you have to ask them to weigh in on. Anything else that we can think of that you might want to double check or have Tony double check? Cause we can get coding answers. That's easy. We can get that. And we can have that on the fourth. I entertain a motion from the board to continue to potential tentative meeting for March fourth. So motion made by Mr. Beninato?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It'll be four, uh, zero, one, Tony. We're going to open up a special from the March fourth. Three, four. When I was special, we'll open, we'll call, we'll call it whatever the meeting.
Sounds good.
Great. Three, four. Wonderful. Thank you very much for attending. Appreciate your input. Moving on our agenda with appointments. We don't have any appointments this evening, so we have board business. Moving on to our board business updates, uh, board member subcommittees. Mr. Beninato?
Uh, for Drainage and Stormwater Committee. Uh, we are moving forward. Uh, we had very brief discussion with Mr. Hill. And I got all the contact information for the other members and we're going for something February, sometime in either March or early April.
March or April, oh, great. And what did we, what did we discover, Tony, that environmentalists going around doing some survey work for MS four?
Yeah, they're doing stuff for the town.
So hoping they can, whatever they're doing, hand over to that drainage committee.
They probably could. And it's, it's a report.
Going to reverse order. Mr. Kimmet is not attendance. Mr. Cohen?
Uh, just a slight update on Economic, Economic Development Committee. We have released a, a short video, informational video through WHCA. Uh, you can find that on WHCA, um, website and listen to the short video. That has myself and this kind of, uh, talking about the Economic Development Committee.
Nice, great, thanks. Uh, Mr. Ellis?
No updates at this time.
And Open Space hasn't met yet, uh, for myself, Mr. Campbell. Uh, Open Space hasn't met. We are, uh, waiting on members to respond to the town clerk's office of whether not going to be, if they're going to still be staying on or not. So we haven't been able to have a court. Or they haven't been able to have a court. That's a better way to put it. Moving on to the zoning application reviews for applications with the ZBA. You have in your packets two applications. Any comments, Tony, in regards to these two applications going for ZBA?
Uh, the first one is a site plan that's being done, the site plan review, which is under the purview of the zoning board. They're proposing a building, uh, within the business zone. That particular lot is trimmed just by the zoning line, so the front portion is all in the business. And the back portion is residential. And they provided the ZBA with a site plan showing the building, drainage, parking. Meets all the, meets all the requirements under the site plan. So.
Mr. Ellis, any questions or comments from the board?
Just a, just a question on that. Were, were they only using the, sorry for that.
No, no problem.
Um, were they only using, using the portion of the lot that, that's still in the business?
Yes.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so it's only a small portion in the back. That's, that's. And I entertain a motion for the application for special permits, site plan review filed by Jeffrey Perret to forward on to ZBA. So most of the made? Most of them made and properly seconded by Mr. Ellis. Any questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four, zero, one. Second one is an application by Deborah Perkins, trustee eighty-two Tavern Way Trust. Question of revocation of billing permit R twenty-four zero zero two nine, appeal to the billing inspectors and enforcement officers' decision for issuance of permit R two four zero zero nine zero High Street. Town planner, any update on, on this?
Uh, this one is, uh, the building inspector issued a building permit for that property. But that property is a estate lot. And there was an estate lot about, I believe, seventy-eight feet away. So what happened is, under the zoning bylaw, the way it reads, the distance between those two access points should equal the frontage. So the building inspector, in essence, issued the building permit in error and revoked that. But, so he, so he revoked that building permit, but this applicant has filed to appeal that building permit from having been issued. So he's going to, so they're going to the zoning board saying that they want the building, that building permit pulled back. Because that lot does not conform to zone.
Any question or comments from the board?
I don't know if I'm fully understanding that. So you're, so you're telling me that they're, they're saying that they, they?
So what, so what happened is that, that lot was created.
Yeah.
And it's an estate lot. Well, there's an estate lot just down the street.
You get that, yeah.
And the access points are too close.
Yep.
It's not the way, the way.
So the, so the, the building department issued a building permit. This applicant is appealing that building permit, saying it should not have been issued. It's my understanding that that building permit has been, uh, rescinded. But what they're doing is they're going to the zoning board of appeals and they're saying, hey, that building permit should not have been issued. It was issued in error. And they're asking the zoning board of appeals to rescind that building permit.
Is there, is there any benefit to just? Like, it's already been revoked through the building, correct? So, so what's the purpose of rescinding?
Uh, that's, that's the process. If you, if you, if a building permit is issued and you do not feel that the building permit should have been issued, you can file with the zoning board of appeals. That's the process.
Yeah. And a tentative motion to forward on to ZBA? Motion made by Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Beninato. Any discussion regards to that motion? But the record show that it is seven fifteen, Mr. Kimmet is with us. Any questions regarding that being forwarded on to ZBA?
No, I don't. I'm probably going to recuse myself because I didn't hear the whole conversation.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Ellis, is there any question?
I'm exempt from this.
Got it. All those in favor of forwarding on to the ZBA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm not opposed.
Abstentions, though. Uh, count is three, zero, two.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Beninato.
Thank you.
Moving on our agenda under administration, town planner update. Town planner?
Uh, we have two things going on. One, we have an invoice, uh, that we need, uh, signed. And that's for, is it two hundred and forty-two? And that is for, um, attendance at the MMA conference.
Any comments about the invoice for MMA conference participation? An update on that. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate your attendance at the MMA conference. Always seemed to be a good time. Twenty-six. Updates on grants, Tony?
So the one-stop program has opened up for expressions of interest. I had filed six, received feedback on all six.
Oh, wow.
And out of the six, five were, we'll say, uh, positive feedback. And were eligible. So I'll be pursuing grants for those five. Uh, the sixth one, I gave it a good college try, but the state wasn't buying it, so. I'll look, what I'm looking for under that grant is basically pursuing a generator for the town, uh, library and senior center. And so I'm going to look at another funding source that we may be able to get a grant for. I'm going to look under our municipal vulnerability plan and the action grants that go along with it. We may, you know, air quote, may be able to pursue something there. And that's all I really have.
Any questions from the board or the town planner? Hearing on the next planning board meeting tentative schedule originally for March eleventh, we have moved it up to next Monday, three, four. Uh, I entertain a motion to solidify that date. I have a planning board meeting in meeting room A on the second floor, Monday, March fourth at six thirty PM. So who? Motion's been made by Mr. Beninato.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to that motion? Been everybody attend? Seeing no questions, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open some windows, yeah, that motion carries, five, zero.
I mean, you're calling for this room, but if the select board room is available, I can get us down there.
Oh, perfect. That'd be great. Yeah. That's a lot cooler now.
Well, there was a, supposedly, there's a calendar downstairs for the conference rooms and the select board meetings. And you put your, you put down for it. When we went down and put down for it, someone was occupied, going to occupy the select board meeting room tonight. And so, you know, it's first come, first served. But unfortunately, they changed their mind.
And it'll be posted on Thursday, correct, Tony?
Yes, it'll be posted this Thursday.
Anybody have anything for go to the order? For the go to order? On birthdays or anything? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Christmas is coming.
Christmas is coming, yeah.
Christmas is coming.
So I entertain a, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Mr. Beninato. Properly seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At seven twenty, we are adjourned.